I'd like to call the meeting of the Narragansett Regional School District School Committee to order, and we begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, good evening, everyone. I am notifying everyone that this meeting is being recorded by NRSD in conjunction with Templeton Community TV, or TCTV, and that recording's being provided to both Templeton and Phillipson Cable Access TV, as well as it will be on their Facebook page, and there is a YouTube channel. Bills and payroll, we do have some bills and payrolls to accept, so...
I make a motion that we accept the bills and payrolls.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to accept the bills and payrolls as presented. All in...any discussion? Nope, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, so the motion carries unanimous. All right, so we're gonna go right into public input. We do have our general rules in effect, speak to the items that are on the agenda. Questions that you may have can be directed through myself, the chair, and I would invite anybody down at this point in time if that has public input.
Madam Chair, are we speaking into the microphone, or how do you want this to be done?
Yes, please.
You want me to get on my knees?
I'm sorry.
To the members of the school committee, you're taking your oath of office...
I'm sorry, could you just identify yourself?
John Jocinski, 750 South Road, Templeton, Massachusetts. To the members of the school committee, you're taking your oath of office, put you in the position of providing support to the students and the staff of the school district. You did not create the financial mess that the town of Templeton finds itself in. Mistakes of a financial matter within this community go back to too many years of errors in judgment, including trying to maintain a ridiculously low tax rate. In later years, spending taxpayer monies on such issues as the rental of Lilly Chemical, the purchase of Viking Container, and in more recent years, the failure to grant permits and permission for the mall of Templeton. In addition, the failure to recognize the need to promote a positive business climate after such entities as Temple Stewart and a paper mill had closed have only stymied needed growth necessary to broaden the tax base. The Commonwealth of Massachusetts shares in the blame for the financial mess that the district annually faces with its continued inability to revamp Chapter 70 funding and its failure to fully fund transportation costs for the Narragansett Regional School District. I urge the school committee to unanimously, fully fund the school budget and to support the effort of professional staff from the superintendent, to the administrators, to all faculty members at each level, to the paras and all other hard-working individuals who come to work on a daily basis to help provide for quality education. I am hopeful that the elected officials within the community be far-reaching in their efforts to broaden the tax base, encourage growth of a viable business climate throughout the community on the multiple properties that have been abandoned or those that have yet to be dedicated for new business growth. It is far time that a vision be developed where the school district, police, fire, and all other departments are never put into this position again. Only by accepting this challenge will the town be able to extricate itself from the financial mess that it annually finds itself in. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Kim Pratt, I'm from Phillipson, I am the Chair of the Board of Selectmen, but I am speaking for myself tonight. We've listened to Templeton's feelings and thoughts on the school budget, so I'd like to share mine that have formed over the last five months. Phillipson always supports the requested school budget, district budget. In May, we voted for the 20.3 million, voting in override, not by much, but it passed. We always pass the budget, even though Phillipson pays more per student, ever since the state started using the minimum contribution formula. When it comes to education, Phillipson's children are at the mercy of Templeton. When the budget is cut, services are cut, and when service are cut, all the students feel those cuts, not just Templeton's. This year, cut will be different, though, it'll have a different effect. At the middle high school, all our students go to the same school, and they will all feel the cuts. But at the elementary level, Templeton Elementary will remain intact, and Phillipson Memorial will start to be picked apart. I sincerely respect and thank the school committee for all your work and time to prepare the budget, and I truly understand how hard this year has been. I also understand that many people in Phillipson feel that they are being punished. Look at the numbers from last district-wide town meeting. There were 96 Phillipson voters, 328 Templeton voters. Two of the amendments and the amended main motion passed by less than six votes. So that tells me there are quite a few Templeton people there that supported the 19-8 budget. So I'm asking that you all consider voting and certifying a budget that you know in your heads and you know in your hearts is the number that the school needs to give it the best education we can, and that our students have the best chance to succeed. Thank you.
Do I have any other public input?
Bridgette Goth here, Phillipson, Massachusetts. I want to say thank you for standing strong for our children, our teachers, and our schools. I know that this must have been exhausting and frustrating, and honestly, you guys are probably all done with the budget, and I don't blame you, but you're standing strong for our kids, our teachers who support our children in many different aspects, not just their education. They're holding these kids' hands when they need it. I ask you to please stay strong for our children because they deserve a great education. They have gone...you have already gone lower than what you should, and you know that. You've gone as low as you can. Please stand strong and keep it a great day to be a warrior, not just an adequate one. Thank you.
Do I have any other public input? Seeing none, NDEA?
Eric Ivan, Baldwinville Road, Templeton. I am a teacher here at the Narragansett Regional School District, and I make $74,174. And I earn every single cent. As duly-elected servants of the town of Phillipson and Templeton, you are here to do tonight what's best for the children of your town, and for that, we thank you. Quite honestly, as far as I'm concerned, FY '20 isn't the biggest issue in the room. It's just one of many previous and future battles on the war on education in Templeton. The bigger issue here is a cultural one, a lack of understanding by people here locally and across our country of what it means to belong to a community. So if I can take a moment, as the President of the Union and a social studies teacher, I'd like to make a few historical observations. Rene Rousseau was a French Enlightenment philosopher. He imagined that a contract exists between members of a community. It's unwritten, it's on our hearts and in our actions. People we don't even know or have never met are part of that contract relationship. Rousseau called this "the social contract." He theorized that in order to have the most successful community, we as individuals have to sacrifice some of our needs in order to benefit what he called "the public good." Communities fail, Rousseau claimed, when individuals put their own needs first. Fast forward to the New Republic, and we encounter the philosophy of Rousseau through George Washington, our nation's first president. Washington believed that American life and American communities rely on something called "the public good." The father of the republic and its greatest president believed communities and the nation as a whole rely on self-sacrifice to work. If all 10 or all 100 or all 10,000 of a town's members are just looking out for themselves, the experiment fails. He believed, as I do, that strong communities rely on the service and self-sacrifice of their members in service to this civic good. That means I participate in my community, not for what I gain, but for what someone else's children I've never met gain, for what someone else's grandchildren I may never meet gain. We sacrifice a little for ourselves for what's best for all, the civic good. As I said, the entire time I've lived in Templeton, 15 years, funding education has been an uphill battle, and it shouldn't be. As a community, our one goal should be fund our communities, and education especially. So I'm here to say loud and clear to the vocal, the toxic, the willfully ignorant few who hide behind their keyboards on social media, for the children of Templeton and Phillipson, an adequate education is not good enough. Our children deserve more, our children need more, our children are the future. So I urge you as a committee to continue to do what's best for our children, represent your communities and your charge as a school committee, and we, the members of the NDEA, will stand with you regardless of the outcome. Thank you.
As soon as we get to our business tonight, the fiscal year 20 budget is what we are focusing on. I do just want to make...we had met last night with the Board of Selectmen of Templeton and Phillipson, and one of the things we discussed is what are the potential outcomes, so I just want to lay that out there so everybody understands where we are and what we need to do this evening. Right now, we have a certified budget of 19.78 million, but it is not approved because the town at the district-wide...towns, excuse me, at the last district-wide town meeting approved a budget of $19.5 million. So what that means for us this evening is we have a couple of choices at hand. We can certify our budget at that $19,500,000, and that would end the discussion. We would have to make some cuts to be able to meet the $19.5 million in this district, but we would be done with any further discussion about FY '20, what the number is, a lot more discussions about it, but we could start focusing on next year's budget. The second option that we have is to certify or maintain certification of either the 19.78 or any other number that's larger than 19.5 million. That would mean that tomorrow morning, we would need to make a phone call or an email to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, alerting them to the fact that we in this district do not have an approved and funded budget. At that point, it will kick off some events by the state, who will be looking and soliciting not just the school district, but also our two towns for information, so that they can come in and make a determination by December 1st what the school's budget would be. So really, those are the two paths. There is another path that I'm going to put out there because it's a possibility. We could, because there is time, have...please don't hate on me. We could potentially have another district-wide town meeting because there's time to do so. We need 14 days to get it advertised, so we could have it. And unless one of my committee members were to move that we should entertain that idea, that won't happen, so I'm just gonna put that out there, that there is time to do so. But that is where we are this evening. So tonight's deliberation will focus on which avenue we would like to pursue, and then, based on that, what our next steps and follow-ups will be. So with that being said, what I'd like to do first maybe is just solicit any comments or questions first from the school committee before we start with the motion, just based on what we heard last night from Mr. Hatch, and where we left from last...is it last week? I think it was just last week with the district-wide town meeting, so I'll put that out there if anyone has anything they want to say before we motion and get into discussion. Okay, seeing none? Nope, yes.
I listened to Mr. Hatch last night, and as you know, I've been doing this for a long time, and I wasn't...I didn't get a good feeling from the presentation on what the state would do come December 1st, so that was just my take on it.
Any other comments? Okay, so our discussion centers around the FY '20 budget. If someone would like to make a motion as to what they would like to do, the committee can entertain that. So does anyone want to motion to, I would say, accept the 19.5 million? We can motion to accept any other number, to maintain where we're certified. If we do nothing, our current certification of 19.78 stands.
I'll make a motion that we go with the 19.5.
So I have a motion on the floor to certify, recertify our budget at $19.5 million. Do I have a second? Hearing none, that motion fails. Do I have any other motions on the floor before I close out this agenda item?
I move a number of $19,650,000.
Okay, so I have a motion for $19,650,000, and I have a second on the floor for that. Do I have any discussions, comments? Maybe Mr. Mason, you would want to speak to your motion first off and let us understand what brought you to that number?
Again, it's the compromised number we had the other night at town meeting. It basically split the difference between the two figures from the town and the district.
I do believe that was the number that I called out, and I was called an idiot for asking for that number. However, I think it's a good number.
Questions, comments by the committee?
Do we have any way of saving the additional $126,000 that that would require us to cut? And I know this is directed towards the superintendent and the business manager, but it's $136,000 that we'd have to cut still. Do we have any inkling as to how we would do that?
I think it's $113, right, 19.78 to 19.65, is that right?
Yeah, I can't do math.
Only because I have it written down.
The difference between the two of those days. Yeah, I need an adding machine. Do we have any idea? Because that matters to me, to go to that number, that matters to me, and how we get there, and I don't know that...I don't know how we're gonna get there, and I don't know how to support it without knowing how the direction we're gonna take to get there.
So I will ask Dr. Kazvent, only because when we start talking about positions and people, we potentially could be addressing contractual issues, that if you feel that we would need...we do have executive session to be able to do that here, to be able to have those discussions. If you feel the need that in order to answer, that we would need to do that, please let me know, and we can make that happen.
Obviously, for me to say that this cut may be this cut, definitely, I would have to...we would have to obviously do the math of it. Not only that, we would have to identify positions, take some positions off the list. I mean, it would...it would...it will take us to go into that for me to explain that out. I don't know how I'm gonna do that in open session. Quite frankly, we'll have to come back in open sessions, but we have two bargaining units that I'm gonna have to consider as we go through that process.
So in respect for Dr. Kazvent's wishes, then, I would entertain a motion to enter into executive session for reason number two, which would be for contract negotiations with non-union personnel, and/or reason number three, contract collective bargaining contract with our two unions, which would be the NDEA and the UFCW. We will return into open session immediately following. I would take a motion.
So will you.
And I do have a motion. Do I have a second? And I have a second. Mr. Mason?
Aye.
Mrs. Matson?
Yes.
Mrs. Robichaud?
Yes.
Mrs. Kozel?
Yes.
Mrs. Trifilo?
Yes.
Mrs. Chardier?
Yes, but do we have to do anything with the open motion that's out there? Or the motion that we...
That'll stay...that's still out there, yes. Uh, Mr. Marks?
Yes.
Okay, and Mrs. Hughes says yes, are unanimous, so we will enter into executive session, and we'll let everyone know when we're done and invite you back in. Thank you. Into order, we came out of executive session. I was asked that the committee members speak up, because it's hard for everyone to hear us, so we need to project to the back of the room, so we will hopefully remember to do that. If not, someone just wave their hand and we will speak up. We have a motion on the floor to recertify our budget to $19,650,000, and it was seconded. Any comments from the school committee at this point on that motion?
Yeah, I'll make a comment. Yeah, I think the...when we went into this...when we started going into this process, the goals that we developed for this process was to create a budget that will adequately support all the students and the programs, that promote continuous learning and social, emotional growth, to equally support both elementary schools, and to continue to improve the academic standing of the district. I think the most important responsibility of this committee is to both improve student achievement. To date, I have not heard, nor have I been able to come up with a justification on how reducing this budget any further will improve this charge. Eliminating the educators, increasing the class sizes, and moving students mid-year are all issues that have been proven to be detrimental to the academic achievement of student issues, which we all of this committee have stuck, discussed in length, and which we have fought against and agreed were not conducive to student achievement. I think we've already...our original budget was $20 million. We come down almost $600,000 to get into the 19.876. We're now being asked to cut $1,614,000, as well as all the stuff that we have in school We've already come down almost a million and a half dollars from our original budget, and I just don't agree with coming down any further. That's it.
Mr. Marks, any other comments? Okay, seeing none, we will do a roll call vote. Again, the motion on the floor is to certify our FY '20 budget at $19,650,000. Mr. Mason?
Aye.
Mrs. Matson?
Yes.
Mrs. Robichaud?
Aye.
Mrs. Kozel?
Yes.
Mrs. Trifilo?
No.
Mrs. Chardier?
Yes.
Mr. Marks?
No.
And Mrs. Hughes says...says no, right now. So we are 5-3 against the 19.65. I would entertain another motion on the floor.
I make a motion, we stay with that 19.786, 886.
A second.
I have a motion and I have a second. Any discussion on that number? Hearing none. It's almost a non-binding because of the failure of the vote, because that number is what it is, so I'm not even sure we really need to have a motion.
It was $3 short anyway, it was 89.
Okay, so if that was your intent, we really don't need a motion, so it's not something we need to vote on. Okay, so any other motions on the FY '20 budget? If this leaves as stands, we will be alerting the state in the morning that the school committee has not moved from its original 19 million, 19.78 and change, and we move in that direction. Yes?
I make a motion, we accept 19.5.
So I have a motion on the floor to accept $19,500,000. Do I have a second?
A second.
And I do have a second. Any questions or comments on that number? Seeing none, I will do a roll call vote. Mr. Mason?
No.
Mrs. Matson?
No.
Mrs. Robichaud?
No.
Mrs. Kozel?
Yes.
Mrs. Trifilo?
Yes.
Mrs. Chardier?
No.
Mr. Marks?
No.
And Mrs. Hughes says no, so that motion fails. Any other motions? Seeing none, what that means is that this committee is staying with our 19.78 million-dollar budget, and that's where we're moving forth with...to advise the state. That is the will of the committee. I'm up to the next part, which is...I'm sorry, my glasses, on school committee comments. Any additional comments?
Yeah, I do. I just...I want people to be prepared, though, that there's no guarantees that the state is coming in and supporting this budget. We have to be aware of that, and if there's cuts that need to be made, it's gonna be now a month and a half or two months more into the budget season where we're spending it in 19.7. I just want people to be aware.
I would second that comment, that if there are positions that are not filled, and it makes sense to hold off on a decision until we do have a number, we're going to have to do that. So, you know, we have to be responsible, but again, because we can't speak for the state at this point, I will take entertain comments on the floor.
Madam Chairman, I think it is of utmost importance that at this particular stage in the process, that the superintendent's office and/or school committee contact the local legislators to let them know as to where you stand. They failed you in terms of Chapter 70 funding, you wouldn't be here tonight if that had been accomplished. You're at a crossroads now, you'll face this again and again and again, unless calls are made to local legislators to get them involved in this process. I'm somewhat disappointed that I did not here again tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Any other school committee comments at this point?
If there's nothing more budget-related that anyone would like to say, I'd like to give some nice, good news, some updates from the student body. The marching band and color guard went to MICA, and they got three stars, which is super good. Homecoming was a complete success, as was Warrior Fest. The dance was Friday night for the high school, and everyone had a great time, was at the PACC. Saturday, Warrior Fest was a blast, we had a bunch of food trucks, and local vendors come in, and then the football game and fireworks was a bunch of fun. What else is going on? Oh, the field hockey team made districts, their first games tomorrow night, we're super pumped for that. Anything else?
I know the seniors are all really excited because we're all really starting to hunker down on all of our college applications, so that's really exciting, a whole chapter for all the seniors.
And you're praying for snow?
Praying for snow. Little hole guard walking down the road.
And the theater is doing a Halloween night event, as well as for Halloween, the seniors are dressing up for their parade of horribles, so that'll be fun.
Yeah, and just to add to that, the...is it the...the music is collecting canned goods on Halloween?
That's the theater.
Okay, and what is the...
Trick or treat, so kids can eat. Our high school students will be going around trick-or-treating for canned goods in non-precious donations.
Okay, so when you see older children out there, and they ask you for canned goods, please... please, you know, open your pantries and give what you can. Will we also have a collection out in the parking lot for anyone who drives by? They will be too, so I encourage the community to all chip in. Yes.
This is not on the good news again, but I need to make people aware by putting, by kicking this can down the road, which is what just happened. The issue of moving kids, the issue of cutting positions, the chance of that becomes greater the longer the time goes by. So you're talking, if you're, if people are concerned about what's best for kids, moving kids halfway through the year is not as good as doing it about now. So that's, kicking that can is bothersome to me, and people have to just know what it is that they're doing.
Mrs. Chordier?
With that being said, fighting for what we, fighting for what we really believe in, and what we're, the education of the kids is still important, too, and I understand what you're saying, Ryan. I just, there's no easy answer right now.
But I don't believe that the state is going to come in and care particularly. They have a process or a policy, they have a process and a policy that deals with these types of budgets, and that's what they do. So we'll just be aware that that's what you've done, we've done, is kicked it down the road.
Thank you. Any other school committee comments, and I will entertain another comment from the floor because I've already done one, so I want to be fair.
I just have a question in regards to.
Could you just identify who you are, too?
I just have a question in regards to the budget. Right now, we're spending the 1/12 budget, which would be the 19.7, correct?
Correct.
So what happens if the state comes in with a lower number? What extent is that?
The advisement that we've been given is that whatever number they come in needs to be split into twelfths. So we will be in a position, if it's 100,000 less and it's halfway through the year, we've got to save 200,000 because we've got to make up the six months. So we'll adjust the future assessments to both towns to come out to whatever number they give us. So it is a bit of double jeopardy, which is another issue that we're, you know, when we talk to our legislators, that needs to be brought up. I don't have at my fingertips and anything I could find that there's a precedent for a situation like this, so there's no, no data to go back to that. So, you know, we may be the first district who is, are faced with a reduction from a 1/12 number, from DESI and what that means, which could prove to be some interesting case, so not a good situation.
I just wanted to reflect, Christine Lynch, based on the presentation last night, do we have any town numbers now that they would be using to calculate this year's minimum contribution yet?
That has been done, so FY '20 has been calculated with the, when he went through, when he said the things that have been adjusted. So FY '20 is set as far as minimum contributions. It will be the impact FY '21 that the Student Opportunity Act may have some sort of factor into. So did that?
I didn't look at the detail, so where do we fall?
We're still hold harmless. I mean, that, that's the problem. We're still hold harmless, and bonus aid is really all we can expect. And I'll take one more.
Maria Fuller, Duncan, when the state, after you called down to say that they have to come in, when will they give us an amount about, about time, will they give us an estimate amount?
Yeah, I know that December 1st is the date. I don't know if, Ms. Geister or Dr. Kazant, if you, if any conversations you've had lead you to believe that it would be any sooner than that, they've just, December 1st. Yeah. Yeah. And, and they could do it earlier, you know, we, we don't know, but December 1st is what the, the regulations and the law states, so.
Once we get that amount on December 1st, is that when we will be doing the cuts, or we'll be doing them before the state?
Well, at this point, we will be able to have discussions as to what the actual cuts would need to be based on the actual amount that the state gives, but I think having some fiscal conservance, conservance.
Conservancy.
Conservancy, thank you. Right now, as I indicated, we really need to be keeping an eye on positions that have not been filled. We've already, I believe, frozen expenses, so there, we have to be proactive in, on the chance that something happens, so.
I think it's important to note, because you have all been made aware of this, too, that we've spoken with Christine Lynch, and that the budget was set because they thought that it was lower than our previous year, so sort of the public is aware of that as well, that they, that it was lower than what year? Than last year? The budget was set at the, at the number that it is now because they thought it was lower than last year.
Well, it was, it is, yeah.
And although, you know, just so that that's information.
And I think that, just to expand a point, because I want people to understand what you're talking about, FY '19 is, our budget was higher than our FY '20 number is, but included in our FY '19 was the debt servicing for the addition of the high school, which was a debt exclusion on the town's books. So it wasn't a real apples-to-apples comparison, and they, they acknowledged that they know that. So I just want to, yes, so absolutely, absolutely. And, and, and we provided all of that, they acknowledged they knew it, so you're, you are absolutely correct, though, so I just want to let people know why.
I'm not giving out inaccurate information.
No, 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 no.
What I'm saying is DESI thought that they had a lower number, and they did not. So that kind of makes me a little bit nervous for the budget that they will come in and set.
Okay, the correspondence, I don't believe there's any new correspondence. We did speak of the, the letter that was dropped off from Mr. Francis. Last night, we spoke about that, so we don't need to go over that this evening. Our next school committee meeting is scheduled, as of right this moment, is for November 20, Wednesday, 6 o'clock here in the Kiva. And if there's no other business, I would take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I have a motion, and I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.